Today from Benita Springs, it's not an official city council meeting, but it is a workshop. And pursuant to executive order number 20 dash 69 issued by the office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20th, 2020 municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications, media technologies such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by section 120 dash 54 five B two Florida statutes. The members appear remotely. The members appearing remotely for this meeting are Mayor Peter Simmons, Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson, Councilman Jesse Purdon, Councilman Chris Corey, Councilwoman Laura Carr, Councilwoman Amy Karamba, and Councilman Fred Forbes. The pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask Commissioner Ray Sandelli to please lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My pleasure.
And Arlene, I believe our city manager, you have some things to read and then we'll have Ann Grandell lead us in prayer.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. In all efforts and all precautions to protectively work with our community, our city council has decided to conduct this meeting virtually. The City of Benita Springs is utilizing Zoom technology to hold this April 20th, 22nd, 2020 virtual city council workshop. Additionally, the council has not selected a platform that requires the public to purchase or download any additional software or equipment to watch this meeting. Aside from the Zoom platform and that the participants are appearing remotely, the public should have no difference in their ability to observe this meeting. And with that, I would like our communications director Laura Taylor to just go through the procedures of public participation.
Thank you.
In order to ensure that the public have the ability to view the meetings, the city's communication department will broadcast the meeting through all the usual channels and avenues that are provided when the city council meeting is held. Meeting can be viewed live on Benita TV.
Laura, Laura, sorry, you have a lot of feedback.
Okay.
Okay. As Laura was going through that, that folks can utilize watching this meeting on Benita TV Comcast 98 Summit Broadcast, Channel 96, Hotwire, Channel 398, CenturyLink Prism TV, Channel 87. The city will also rebroadcast this workshop on cable and will post it on the city's website. The city did ask the public to send any comments to citymeetings@citybenitasprings.org. And as of this time, we had not received any comments, public comments. In the future, when we do, we do post them on the webpage as well. And then, yeah, as far as I would like to ask the city attorney to move forward with some additional comments for the meeting.
Sure, real quick, the, the, everything that Arlene just outlined, all the options that were provided are all consistent with chapter 120 and chapter 286 Florida statutes and the governor's executive order regarding quorums at public meetings. So we have had no issues with public comments and this meeting can proceed as scheduled.
Great.
And Mayor, if you would entertain a motion to conduct the public workshop in this format.
So moved. So moved, and there's a second council is a further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Arlene or Laura, do you have anything else? If not, I'd like to call on Ann Grandell to please lead us in prayer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're, we're.
Okay, thank you so much. Ann, welcome and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here with y'all. Father, these are trying times and this crisis has affected everyone on earth. The only one big enough to resolve it is you. Thank you for giving strength, peace, and wisdom to all of our nation's leaders, particularly Governor DeSantis and our city and county leaders. Lift the burden of responsibility off of their shoulders. Expedite healing to all those who've been affected and peace to the families who have lost loved ones. Give our first responders, especially the medical personnel on the front lines, protection, wisdom, and stamina. We ask for divine strategies and solutions, particularly for the coronavirus team, as well as the doctors and scientists who are working tirelessly to find cures and vaccines. Send your spirit into our homes, our businesses, and our hearts, dispelling fear and bringing hope and healing as we trust you to guide us through this so that when we come out on the other side, our nation and our community will be more unified and stronger. Truly, one nation under God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. That was some words that I'm sure are well received by a lot of individuals right now. So thank you, Ann, for that. We are going to, I guess we'll, even though we've already had a vote, why don't we do roll call? Let's have, let's have roll call.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Present.
Councilman Purdon?
Present.
Councilwoman Carr?
Laura Carr here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Yeah.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Here.
I know Deputy Mayor Gibson is going to be a bit tardy, but will is, will be joining us at some point, so thank you for that. We're going to open up now with a update on economic conditions during COVID-19 in Benita Springs and everywhere else, but we are going to start with the Lee County Economic Development Office.
Thanks, sir, and I'm glad to be joined by my partner in crime Commissioner Sandelli, who's been a strong supporter of our effort, has been a great director, given us great direction. We, we, we started this event by opening up a business call center, the emergency operations center, which, you know, businesses throughout the county have been taking, making use of. It was for the purpose of helping people with the different loan, loan programs and unemployment insurance and whatnot. So that still is in operations and we encourage anyone to, to use it if we can be of any assistance. But in terms of the, the numbers, that's mostly what I think I'm going to provide you today. Some of them are state level and some of them are county level. So of the different loan programs, the, the first program that was initiated and activated was the state's emergency bridge loan program. There were 37,000 applications filed, only 36,000 were, I'm sorry, only 1,000 were funded, so 36,000 were never funded. So they immediately went through the $50 billion budget that was allocated and shut the program down. They, they've asked, they've pivoted to the, the federal programs, the PPP, the payroll protection program, as well as these SBAs, economic injury disaster program. So on a state level, we've received about $18 billion of the PPP. We're the third leading state in receiving those loans. They, we expect to, with the new, the new reauthorization of the $310 billion to, to see a similar amount of those loans come to the state. That represents 88,000 loans. So for people who aren't that, are not that familiar with the program, it's the forgivable loan program where your payroll portions of your rent and your utilities may be forgiven if you may, if you bring your workforce back for the next eight weeks. So that's been the most popular loan, not-for-profits, as well as the faith-based community are also eligible for that loan program. The, the economic injury disaster loan program, we've received, Florida's received 2,000 of those loans for $383 million. And we, you know, both in Lee County and in the surrounding area, we've seen, you know, checks deposited and those loans are moving, moving forward, but that, but both those little programs are exhausted at this point, but they both have been included in the new bill that the Senate passed yesterday, we expect that the House to pass tomorrow. So those are, you know, those are vital lifelines for, for, for our businesses. What's been a little bit more difficult has been the unemployment or the reemployment benefits program. In Lee County, there have been 16, only 6% of the, the applicants that have gone online or submitted paper applications have been processed. So when I say these numbers, that's, you know, keep those in the context of, of a 6% process rate. So in Lee County, 16,000, we've had 16,000 employment, reemployment applications processed. Mostly those are in the hotel and restaurant sector, but you can see them across healthcare, law, professional services, construction, retail, et cetera. But the, the vast majority are in the, the, that's, and the hospitality sector. We, you know, we, our official unemployment rate is 4.3% as of March numbers, but we really do think that with the number of filings that we're, we could be somewhere in the 15 to 20% rate as of today. How long that lasts, you know, to be determined. The, the state program is a more, is a more constrained program than the federal program. So with the state program, unemployed worker is eligible up to $275 a week, depending on what their income was prior to going in, but with the federal program, you're entitled to $600 a week, and that program will be extended to part-time reduced hours and, as single practitioners or as well. So the, the state will open up a new portal for those other categories. And so a lot of the folks who are going through that are, you know, in those subcategories, they're getting rejections even though they're not, they are eligible for the federal program, and those applications will be migrated to the new portal for processing when that, that portal comes online next week. So, you know, where we continue to, we have weekly phone calls with Lee Health and their supply chain folks. We're helping as many businesses as we can pivot to move from what their traditional product production line may be to a, a production line that can supply the, the healthcare community, both Lee Health and others. So we've had a very successful weekly meet, series of meetings where we've helped about 20 companies move into that supply chain for Lee Health. And then we have another weekly phone call with our national retail and wholesale community just to make sure that, you know, we know what the, the, their supply chains are, if we can help assist them move through the county and deploy. We've been able to do that in several cases. So, you know, the resources that we're, we're offering, you know, we have, we, there's some small resources available for companies that would like to pivot and help participate in the healthcare supply chain that we can make available through the, our industrial development authority. And otherwise, we're helping assist people with the existing programs that the, the federal government is providing. And any of these, these phone numbers and data points I can provide to you in writing, and I think I'll stop there to take questions if you have any.
Thank you, and while it's hard for me to see everybody on the screen, I'm just going to go by district, so I'd like to start in District One with Amy Karamba.
John, I appreciate the update, and I just wondered if you have any read on the effect on small businesses, because that's the area that I am most concerned about because it would be most applicable to Benita Springs, whereas I think we have basically a small business economy, economic economy there. And, and with these, the numbers that you have articulated, do you know, were they loaned out of community banks or out of the larger financial institutions? You know where the loans were generated for? Because I think it's our understanding that the smaller entities are having trouble because they don't have relationships with, with the banking system.
Sure.
About that?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take that question first and then get to the, the small business community. Every financial institution has participated in the PPP. If you weren't prior, previously SPA certified, there was a process to go in and quickly certify. So everyone from the small community banks such as Citizens, Edison, to the large Nationals, Bank of America, Chase, et cetera, have all participated. The smaller banks were at a little bit of a harder time getting out of the gate because they had, they didn't have access to the SBA's portal, but when the program up on Friday, they all were up and going by, by Tuesday. Everyone was able to, on the smaller bank, from the, the smaller bank's perspective, everyone was able to get through their, their liquidity levels, and so, you know, everyone hit their numbers. And I think that in this next tranche, there's going to be a special amount set aside just for the smaller banks, the CDFIs, and the community banks, small credit unions and whatnot. So they have different types of relationships with their customers than maybe the Nationals or, or Nationals do, but everyone from cyber, you know, cyber banks like Live Oak to even, you know, Uber had participated in underwriting PPP loans.
And just, yeah, and just a, a kind of a different question. And in your many discussions, are you, do you have any direct contact with the businesses? And are they, is there any conversation about their individual planning to reopen or what they need to reopen or what their concerns are about reopening, you know, so that they, you know, I'd like to hear what they have, what their best practices are and how they think they can move on to the next stage.
Great question. The, I mean, put it in context, there's 33,000 businesses in Lee County, the workforce of about 310,000 people. So we are, to your point, we are a small business economy with some large corporate, you know, participants, of course, that we all are proud of, but we are a small business economy. The, when we, we did a survey to baseline the impact of the, the event on our economy with FGCU, it was done the last month of, week of March, I'm sorry, and will be conducted every, the end of every month up and through the end of the year. And what we found was that this employees, businesses with 25 employees or less were far much, far greater impacted than businesses with more than 25 employees. And at that time, 60% of small businesses had laid off 80% of their employees. So we know that that impact is serious. We did, we've built a model of what the total job loss could be in Lee County by, by, by sector, and we're looking at somewhere 110 to 115,000 jobs are severely at risk. It is, you know, it's in some level of risk. So that, that's, that's just, you know, a number that we don't even know what means. I'm in touch with probably 500 businesses a week right now through either my staff or through video conferences like this throughout the, the county. And so there, you know, the, the hospitality trades were the most hard-hit. Professional services have been hit, but they're, they're still up and running. Manufacturing is up and, you know, up and running in many sectors. Transportation is up and running in many sectors. Companies like Scotland, which was, has begun building a new headquarters on, off of Veliko on I-75, they've, their business is up 300%. So there are some bright spots, you know, they're, they're getting through this, and then the companies have pivoted to participate in the supply chain, you know, are finding additional revenue sources to, to, to stay in business. The PPP is a lifeline because for many businesses, it will, you know, the forgivable part of the payroll, for those who are able to participate in it, you know, becomes a grant. And so that's a significant source of, of revenue for so many of our, especially the smaller businesses that they're, they're primarily payroll and not more capital intensive.
Amy, are you okay for now? Okay, great. District Two, Councilman Jesse Purdon?
John, thank you for that update. I've not met you in person, but it's good to put a face to the name because I talked to Arlene and Rooney probably more than they'd like, and they talk about you often and it's always in a good way, so. What are you thinking that Friday is going to look like with Governor DeSantis? Are you anticipating, you know, things that they might lift, definitions of essential, non-essential, things like that? In the tea leaves, what are you thinking this looks like for us?
On the governor's phone call this, this morning, he stopped using the term, or he asked to stop using the term essential versus non-essential, that every person who has a paycheck has an essential paycheck for their family. And so I expect that to be removed. I think that there'll be, you know, when we get, when the order is done, unless there's some other, you know, issues that we don't know about, that will, will begin to move into a phased reopening. Commissioner Sandelli may be able to speak to that better than me, but I think we certainly have expected to just move, continue moving forward. I mean, we, the, the BOCC opened up the passive parks this week. You'll see some more actions in the upcoming days. I think that from the governor's perspective, that thing will, you know, as we, we, as we went into the lockdown, we'll come out of it. So restaurants will be able to open in some capacity with fewer, with fewer tables, possibly with, you know, with the bars closed. We're following the Trump administration's plan, you know, by and large. So gyms will probably be able to be open with certain, under certain conditions, but we've put together a list of every business sector, you know, down to eight, 800 sectors, and we are working out one by one what would be a, you know, good way for them to re-enter. Now, re-entry is means, reopening means different things, by the way. So many businesses that are closed today are closed because they've chosen to close, not because they had to close, chosen because there was not, there's no demand for their, their product perhaps. So we have a conflict right now with the unemployment benefit frankly paying more than some employees make. So if you're eligible for the total benefit, that's $875 a week. So we, we need to find ways to, to get the workforce to want to come back to work because the PPP really is dependent on bringing your workforce back to take full advantage of that, of that, of that forgivable part. So, and then we have the problem with daycare, so how our schools reopen and our, our ability to provide summer camps and other opportunities for, for, for childcare and, and, you know, for, so that parents can go back to work fully, we have to help, you know, bring that back as well. So I think the governor is moving aggressively, and, you know, he won't, he won't do anything, you know, that's not in the public health interest. What Commissioner Hammond had said earlier today was, in his briefing with Lee Health, we, we feel like we're seeing, if we've seen a flattening of the, of the, of the, of the curve, and so especially for the last three or four days. And so, you know, we'll probably, you know, get to that 14-day, hopefully get to that 14-day overall decline, you know, week, next week or week after next, and then the, we can all move forward to some sort of rational reopening.
Great, thank you. Jesse, you all, you good for now?
All I heard was about three weeks.
Okay, great, thank you. And District Three, Councilwoman Laura Carr?
Yes. Good afternoon. Hi, John, thank you for your information. Um, you mentioned that some industries are pivoting to help Lee Health. What is it that Lee Health needs?
Well, right now, the gowns, I mean, gowns are their primary need right now, surgical gowns. And so there's, you know, they, they, they're, they've moved to a process where they can have a reusable gown as opposed to EMS, which needs a disposable gown. So where we've found three suppliers that can, that perhaps can start participating, and that one being a Benita, uh, or, uh, business as well. Uh, and then most of, most of the other things have, the PPEs have worked themselves out. There's, there's, BNI has done some great rooms with some headboard ventilators. Stormsmarts considered, you know, moving into some mass production. NorTech has moved into mass production. So there's, that's the pivot, but most of the, them that need still is around gowns.
And our hospitals are busy and full?
I think we're at, I want to say we're at 44% capacity right now. You know, part of it is that they've, they've stopped doing elective surgeries, and so, you know, I think you may see Lee Memorial be kept, I'm sorry, Health Park being maintained as a clean hospital for, so they can move back into elective surgeries, or Gulf Coast and Lee Memorial will still continue to, to take in the COVID patients.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. Count, Councilman Chris Corey in District Four?
Yes, John, thanks for being here. The emergency phone center phone numbers, you said that was still up and running?
Yes, sir.
Can you give me that phone number?
Absolutely, the number is 533-2273.
533-2273?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the amount of the PPP loans was 18 billion? Is that what you said?
No, the total amount of, the amount of that was been given in the state of Florida is 18 billion, yes, sir.
And there's been 80,000 loans?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, because I figured, you know, doing a rough calculation, that's about $225,000.
Exactly what it is.
And so that would seem to be a little bit slanted towards the high end of the businesses, but I don't know what your view of that is. Are the small, is it really getting down to the small businesses like it should?
I mean, we, we've seen all the above. I know, I, I own two restaurants on Sanibel, so, you know, I, I, I know what my colleagues have applied for and received, or my peers. I, I, I know there's a lot of dispute about who's getting the loans. I know that Shake Shack has returned their, their loan. I think there's going to be pressure from the administration for others to follow suit. And I think that, I hope, I hope that when the, the loan, the program is refunded this week, that the SBA will have the opportunity to revisit some of the definitions such as, you know, more, you know, 500 employees at this site, at the site is what, what sort of led to a lot of the larger customers getting loans, so that, you know, it's 500 employees, period, not 500 employees per site.
Do they give you or does the state provide anything along the lines as a breakdown of the number of loans by loan size, 5,000 and below, 10 to 5, 5 to 10, 10 to 20, so forth?
I have that at, for a, at a statewide level, the, the loan size, and I can provide that to you.
Would that be nice? I'd like to take a look at that.
We'll email that to you this afternoon.
Thank you. That's all I have there.
Great, thank you, Chris. District Five, Mike Gibson? And he might still be at work? Okay. District Six, Fred Forbes?
Yeah, I, I've found out through a number of reliable sources that one of the problems for the small businessman is that the people that process the loans get paid kind of like a percentage of the loan. So if you figure it out, 25 little loans may only net the same rate as a big loan like has come out here, 140, 200,000. So that's a good bit of the problem, and the other thing is the smaller business people don't have as good a relationship with the people that are processing loans. And we need, we need to contact our senators and our congressmen and make that well-known that that's not acceptable, because a small business guy is the guy that's going to help turn this thing around and hurry.
No, I agree. I think the, every loan comes with a transaction fee, and the transaction fee was set so that neither the, so the lender wouldn't have to pay one. So it's, you know, it's, it's probably a bit more than you typically would, would see. The, you know, every bank probably has a, has a good reason for what they did, whether it's to protect a credit customer or to, you know, or, you know, or to protect, you know, some other class of, of customers. And that's where the, I think some of the discussion has, has turned. It's always going to be the case where you have, where you know your banker, you know, a community bank or a CDFI, you're going to have, you know, you're, 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 you're going to know it's going to be an easier process than going to an online portal that you can't talk to someone about, is your documents, are your documents in order? And so I think, you know, you're right, that if you have the accountants and the attorneys assisting you, you're able to process those loans more efficiently than if you're trying to do it yourself. But I will say, a number of not-for-profits were helped in Lee County, and, and there's not any one bank or type of bank, you know, the entire banking community has processed loans for the not-for-profits and the faith-based community, which, you know, that's, that's something we haven't had access to before.
Yeah, one, one last thing I'd like to point out, and I'll say more about it after we hear from some of these speakers, but we have a lot of people in Benita and Lee County that have worked very successfully through this whole Corona crisis. And guess what? The ones I'm talking to, they've had almost no call-offs. And guess what? The ones I'm talking to, they've had almost no call-offs because of people being ill. And I think what it is, and I think we have to plan this in the coming reopening, whether it's at the county or the state level. If you have serious health issues, even when the restaurants get opened and the place opens up, you should still stay in because if you get it, you're going to probably go to the hospital, number one. Number two, you may not make it out of the hospital alive. On the other hand, if you get it and you have good health, the odds are you may not even have to go to the hospital. That's the way it's shaking out. And I think that's probably why the workforces I'm talking to, manufacturing, construction, all that. They've, they've got a real good attendance and, and very few people calling off on sick.
That's a very good point.
Thank, thank you, Fred. And I'm going to ask if, uh, Laura, do you have a follow-up question?
I have a question, John. You said that the hospitals were about 44% occupied. How long can they stay at 44% before they turn into laying off or furloughing or whatever hospitals do?
Right. And I mean, so it's a valid point of, of the, of the 16,000, uh, claims that have been filed on unemployment, 1,500 have come from the healthcare system. So there has been some furloughing already. So, you know, I was looking at some statistics this morning. This, this, this week last year, Lee Health was received 1,200 emergency room visits a day. They're at 450 today, which is significantly up from what it was yesterday and, and, you know, the, the earlier weeks. So they're, they're hemorrhaging money because they can't do the elective surgeries. They can't do a lot of the other things they need to do to be a, a comprehensive system. So I think that one of the things that the governor is considering is allowing elective surgeries to go, you know, to continue, uh, in the near future. And I think that will, you know, once we can fill up, get people back to the doctor's offices and, you know, the dental offices and fully use the hospitals, you know, because we're so, the healthcare system is so important to our local economy. I mean, I can't overstate how important it is, uh, that, that will, you know, help us, you know, start preparing people to go back to restaurants and whatnot.
Great, thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Are there any other members of council that have a follow-up question? Because, all right, I'd like Commissioner San, oh, uh, Chris Corey. And then I'd like to ask, um, County Commissioner Ray Sandelli, um, if he has a question or a comment. Chris, Corey, please.
John, uh, one of the problems that I hear a lot is that even if the economy would be reopened, uh, in more or less a Broadway phase three approach, there is still a lot of people that are going to be reluctant to go out to a business or go out to a restaurant for fear that the second wave, uh, which they're now starting to see in China, would come along and, uh, you know, that's not something that they want to endure. Is the county or the state forming a group to get the information out to the public about why it's safe to get out to the small businesses, to the restaurants and so forth? How that's going to be structured so that they have at least a decent amount of confidence that they're not going to pick up the virus, uh, if they do go out, venture out and, uh, go to these establishments?
That's a, that's a terrific point. And it falls upon what Councilman Forbes was saying. You know, we have to, if you're sick, stay home. We, we're going to have to find ways. I mean, every business is going to find a way to convince its potential customers that it's safe to come back. And so on, on a county perspective, we're working very closely with the visitor convention bureau and our other, uh, public facing departments, uh, on, uh, internal messaging, as well as working with companies like Experian, who have offered up to provide us with, uh, with a detailed list of how to contact and where to contact people with different messaging, both with social media and otherwise. But, yeah, I mean, one of the, we, we think we've been more, one of the more successful counties and staying in place. And that's why our peak, uh, whenever it is, whether it's happened or it hasn't happened, our, our numbers are lower than anyone had expected them to be. And so, you know, I think by and large, the residents of Lee County have done a great job staying in place. But you're right that we're going to have to find, uh, ways. It's not just communicating people that, you know, you can say to go back outside. But, you know, working with that, that restaurant owner to, to make sure that, you know, if we say there's going to be 50% less tables and those tables have to be removed and the bathrooms have to be sanitized in some sort of exceptional way, enhanced way. Everything has to be wiped out. They're going to find ways to communicate that that's what they're doing. Because it's going, you know, we, we can't kid ourselves. We could open up in three weeks possibly. But it's going to take us a long time for all of us to come back. Visit, visit Florida, um, you know, they've put together a phase, you know, marketing plan that one is the first phase is just to communicate exactly what you're saying, Councilman. Uh, you know, it is safe. We are safe. The second phase will be to, you know, try to get people moving around the state of Florida to, you know, to come back out of their homes and, and visit, you know, parts of the state. Do all that before we, we try to, you know, start marketing to people out of the state to come visit here. But so I think you're going to see a phased approach. People, it's going to be based on people's, um, you know, confidence and what, what, you know, their, the, the, the private sector is going to be doing in their place of business.
Yeah, I think that's right, John. Unfortunately, it's a political year, it's an election year. Some of the news media have their own, own agendas. I know Georgia, the Georgia governor got attacked today on CNN because Anderson Cooper comes out and asks one of the mayors, well, gee, are you concerned that there's a new model out that says that Georgia shouldn't reopen until the mid to late June? And, uh, well, there's models all over the place. So, you know, I, I think we just have to try to do the best we can in, in terms of getting the science-based facts out as term, in terms of, uh, when this, how this thing is going to reopen and why.
Well, we should point out that all the models to date are wrong and have been grossly wrong. 300, three, they, the models projected 3.5 million people were going to die in America. They haven't been right. They're not right. So let's get out information that's scientifically based and not models or, or estimates from China, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and when you think of the models, I, um, you know, there's probably a better analogy. But, you know, when we prepare for hurricane season, we see the spaghetti models and we see the European model and we see the, this model and the other model. And, and I think while, like I said, there's probably a better analogy, I think we, in a sense, need to look at it that way. None of us know exactly what's going on. None of us know exactly what's going to happen. But every single one of us on this call knows that we're dealing with the information that we have, leading the best way that we can. And we're starting to reopen. Now, we're going to do that safely, just like we, um, you know, ha- have been now for a month or more. And we, uh, we're going to get through this together. And, um, I just thank everybody for that. So not knowing exactly where that spaghetti model is going to hit, uh, so to speak, just, you know, and, and we prepare for everything and administer and lead accordingly. Uh, Commissioner Ray Sandelli, I'd like to call on you now if you have any questions or, or comments at this point, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, always a pleasure to be with all of you as a proud resident of Benita Springs. A couple of comments. Uh, one, thank you for the invitation to, to sit on this today. Two, um, one of the big efforts that we've all worked together is to communicate very clearly and distinctly. One thing is obviously the weather we, stuff we put together on lee.gov. But the other thing, John Talmadge and I have met a number of times. Um, and he is probably the best resource. When we start talking about the specifics on our economy, he knows the numbers, he knows how to explain it, he knows how to put it in perspective. And he's always available. So, John, thank you for the work and, and continued to use that resource. Laura, I want to go back to the, to your questions on the hospital because that's a very important aspect of all of this. And congratulations to the teams out there. I think there are two aspects. And I actually sit on a program myself here in Bill McDaniel's out of Collier County. I think when we talk about supplies at the hospital, at first it was crazy because we didn't know if we were going to have enough. We didn't know what the surge was going to be. And as you said, Laura, the numbers were all over the board. Fortunately, they've settled down. The numbers are far less. And so we're in a very good position. But we expended a lot of resources during that initial workup. And so part is resupplying what we needed. And I think the second part is making sure we have additional supplies should we have a recurrence. And the third thing is to step into elective surgery. So I think there's a couple of different components of that. The, um, I think what's going on with the state.
Commissioner, yeah, Sandelli, wouldn't it be more appropriate to say, or more accurate to say, if a, a resurgence comes? Because we didn't get hit. Nothing, you know, we, we.
You're, you're exactly right, Laura. I'm not talking about the surge of it because the numbers, as you said, were, were very wrong. However, I think you always have to, if, if we open up again and there is a recurrence or a surge, whatever the term you want to use, we need to be prepared for that.
It didn't happen in the first place.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so why are we anticipating something that didn't happen returning?
I think we're just preparing, um, should we have, I'll use the word recurrence instead of surge. Okay, is that all right?
But it never occurred. We never got hit. Nothing ever came about the traumatic death and loss of life that we were going to have, including the hospitalizations that we were going to have.
We've been very fortunate. And I think if you, if you look at, uh, you know, so much of our news comes out of New York.
I know.
And, you know, the reality is, is that all we were hearing got every day was body bags and deaths. We actually have a, a larger population than New York. Uh, and we have an older population. They have 15,000 deaths and we're under 1,000. So going back to your point, you're right. It, it didn't occur, but every, every death is a loss. So.
Well, but also, you know, geographically and culturally, we're very, very different.
Absolutely.
But even the virus that was supposed to clean out, wipe out Manhattan didn't happen. 20 people used the mercy ship. The Javits Center Emergency Hospital's already been turned, torn down. So they're not anticipating any huge resurgence because they did get a hit.
I think, Laura, as we all agree, there's a difference between reality and how it gets reported.
May I, may I make a point?
Yes, Fred. Thank you, Commissioner.
I think what the Commissioner is saying is had the United States, and this goes back to a lot of different presidents, got us prepared for this kind of situation, we wouldn't have had a mess today. And all he's saying is we have to be prepared if we have, whether it's another resurgence of this or a huge flu epidemic, we have to be better prepared in the medical institutions, in the government to handle it. That's, I think that's, it's a, it's a backup plan, you might call it.
Okay, but, but we, 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 we got prepared, we're prepared, and it never happened. So we don't need to re-prepare because we are prepared.
We, we.
Correct? We didn't just sit around. We got prepared. We're all ready. I mean, nobody, N, NCH just showed that they had 137 ventilators available, none in use. Again, we're blessed. It's wonderful. But you're saying we have to prepare because we don't want to be unprepared. But we did. We are prepared now. We just.
Now, Laura, we are prepared and we're going to be, continue to be prepared. So I don't, I wouldn't get caught up on words, re-prepared. Uh, we are prepared is the bottom line and we're going to stay that way. We're not going to back off just because we're reopening. We're not going to reopen, let down our guard and become unprepared. We are prepared and we're going to stay prepared. And I know you don't agree with that. And you have, and you have it for the past month, Laura, so that's okay.
But I, no, Mr. Mayor, I just don't understand what, what you're talking about in that we have to.
We're prepared and we're going to stay prepared. That's the bottom line.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, are there other members of council that have a comment at this time? If not, we're going to move on. Um, do you, any closing comments, um, from the economic office?
I just want to say thank you for, for inviting me to participate. This is, your business community is a small business community and, uh, is vital to the whole, our, our whole county. And, uh, I look forward to when we can get out of our offices and, and start knocking on their doors and making sure that we're there to help provide any resources we can.
No, I appreciate that very, very much. Thank you. Stay safe. God bless. And thank you. Keep up the great work. Stay prepared. I know you are. Thank you. Moving on now to the Chamber of Commerce. Tiffany, are you with us?
I am. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, so I will just quickly kind of echo some of John's comments. And thankfully, EDO for being such a great partner because they have provided us not only with info, information, but also the support that we need in order to help our small businesses. Because like you've all mentioned, we are very much a small business community. I, I think that I have positive news. Um, I always try to look on the bright side of things. The good news is we have a lot of people that are still working. Our professional services have certainly, uh, had to pivot into work, work from home. Obviously, I'm in my home. Most of our businesses started to, uh, work from home somewhere around March 16th. But they're still able to be productive. They're still able to, uh, pay their employees and keep people employed. Anticipating that to continue to happen through the June, July timeframe, depending on when childcare facilities start to reopen, because that's going to have a big effect on when parents start to go back to work. And you've talked a lot about kind of more of that consumer fear, um, which is certainly a concern whether the reality of the situation here locally versus what the news is telling us. At the end of the day, we're talking about consumer fear. Um, so I think there is going to be very much a consumer fear where we're going to need to help our businesses reopen, specifically our restaurants and retail, as they've been the hardest hit. But I think that's where we'll also, like I said, see our professional services and see some of our other industries that are fully able to work from home, continue to do so. I know that a lot of the teams have been put on furlough. Businesses seem to be choosing furlough over layoffs, which is fantastic because that means everybody's kind of sharing in a temporary crisis versus a loss of jobs altogether. To John's point, unemployment at the state level has been a nightmare and getting any kind of compensation coming through has certainly been a challenge. And we know that Governor DeSantis is working on that. Some of the other things that we are hearing is the PPP program. Some people are getting funding, not nearly enough, not what we need. And John and I talked earlier today about, um, the allocation of that funding, not necessarily getting to the businesses that need it most. Our tourism industry has certainly been affected. Uh, and I think we'll, we'll start to see a lot more consumer confidence come back if we can start to reopen things slowly. We've been working, it starts to reopen things slowly in the phased plan in the next like three weeks or so. I think if it goes longer than, than, than that, people are going to, um, be extremely fearful of spending in general because of that unknown of what's going to happen over the summer, what's going to happen into the fall. We've been working very closely with the Florida Chamber and their models are projecting if we can open slowly and properly and county by county, because each county has been affected differently. But if we can open properly, we could see, um, our economy get back to pre-COVID numbers by quarter four of 2020, which is fantastic. That's certainly what we're hoping for. If we don't do it properly, they're looking at, um, us not getting back to pre-COVID numbers until 2024. So big swing in numbers there. Um, I'd like to think on the conservative side of it, if we fall somewhere in the middle there and we can get back by, say, early 2021 and we can communicate that sense of confidence and that sense of, that sense of we see progress, again, going back to that consumer fear. So that's certainly our goal as a chamber and as the Economic Development Council. We have been working to share factual information and share resources with the community and with our members and then help to answer questions. We've also been working to help businesses and industries pivot, not only, um, like John was saying, with manufacturing and things like that. They've handled the majority of that, but as more from a, how do you, how do you take a team that's used to seeing each other every day and continue to keep people's mental and emotional well-being while they're isolated within their homes? Um, and keep teams together and very much keep that sense of community, uh, and making sure that we can keep everyone engaged. Uh, I, I think that you would all agree that we were in a really great spot before this as far as, uh, economic conditions and, uh, all the positive things that were happening in our community. And I, I do believe that we can get back there fairly quickly.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'll, um, I'll go reverse. I'll start at District Six. Fred, do you have questions for Tiffany?
No, I, I was going to ask Tiffany if, if she had any ideas or the chamber was putting together something that would be, uh, like, uh, an advertising concept. like an advertising concept, I think to get, when we reopen like restaurants, I think they're gonna have to have lost leaders, specials, everything to get people in. Disneyland is in the same shape. They've already talked about that. And I think the other thing is the more we can get out what the existing workforce that's been working through this, what things they're doing to protect their employees, that will be helpful to those that are about to open because they can look at these things that others have been using successfully.
Thank you, Fred.
We certainly do a lot of those things on a regular basis and we are making concessions for specifically our restaurants and not charging them for some of our services to try to help them recover. To your point about what businesses are doing to reopen, as private small businesses, it's really up to them. And I've heard a lot of different stories about how they're handling it and it really depends on their team. Most businesses as of right now are giving their employees options of you are more than welcome to come into the office or you can work from home. For the most part, they're working from home. This is obviously our, our professional services and the, the industries that can work from home. We've seen a lot of other industries doing kind of split shifts, especially if they're on furlough where half the team comes in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the other half comes in Tuesday, Thursday to limit some of the in-person contact. And, but it's really, it's up to each business and it's up to how big is their office space? How many people do they have in individual office spaces? What is, what is the state of their employees? Do they have children? Are they at an, are they in an at-risk population? What are their health concerns? If it starts to drag on, if we don't start to reopen within the next three weeks, I think we'll start to see a different kind of conversations where businesses are going, going to start to feel pressure to reopen and they're going to probably stop giving their employees the choice. But at this point in time, it's really up to the individual businesses and average business within Lee County has 10 employees. So we're talking about small groups of people in, in small office spaces.
Great. Thank you, Tiffany. Fred, anything else at this time?
Well, the only other thing I think we ought to make sure that the people that are reopening give consideration if they have any employees that have a health condition. They should be the last to be called back. Because they're, they're the ones that would be at the greatest risk, unfortunately.
Thank you. Chris in District Four.
Have you heard anything from the small business community about the rules that the city or the county has in place that might be helpful to relax or ease for a while? That, that might help them at least reopen. One of the things, and this is just off the top of my head, was that, you know, if, if we have rules that prohibit restaurants from having outdoor dining in a, in their parking lot or on the sidewalk, if that requires a special kind of permit. You know, people might feel more comfortable if they were outside dining as opposed to inside in a closed room. I'm just, I'm just saying out loud. So have you heard anything along those lines? The ability to maybe do some retail on the sidewalks or parking lots? So people get comfortable about going back in to do shopping, going back into restaurants and maybe speeding up the process where we fully get back in that shopping or dining mode.
Yes, absolutely. I think that is certainly worth considering, not only restaurants and, and how the seating is arranged, but also like what are the concessions we're making for curbside pickup? And things like that, as well as signage to advertise some of the changes that they have in their business model and really just to let people know that they're open too.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Chris. Laura in District Three?
Hi. Hi Tiffany. Great to see you. Wonderful to see your smile especially and to hear the optimism in your voice. It's really wonderful. I guess I don't share the same optimism. I think three weeks, it's gonna be disastrous if it takes us that long. I don't think it will. This is a very, very fluid situation as we all know. I guess the people I'm talking to, they like the option that the workers are getting. So you're saying that a lot of worker, a lot of employers are giving their workers the option, work at home or come in. Well, we'd like the option of going to a restaurant or not. I think the people who are afraid to go out are far smaller in number than one thinks. And, you know, let's see, you know? The market will decide. Do they want to eat inside? Do they want to eat in a place only six feet apart? Or do they not care? Let the market decide and we might see that we could save our economy. Three weeks, a lot of people are not going to be able to reopen. But, you know.
I absolutely agree and let the market decide. I mean, at this point, it is up to Governor DeSantis to reopen the restaurants. And I think as a council, what you can do to support is to be ready to pivot and adjust to their needs. If they have a huge demand, how can we allow them to serve that demand? So for instance, when we started closing things, at one point, the restaurants could only be at 50% capacity. So how can we provide more capacity to them so that they can safely serve more customers and they can, they can have more profit margins? I mean, our restaurants and our retail is certainly the largest concern right now. And to your point of, of the optimism, I mean, the first two weeks, I promise I was not this optimistic and I kept calling it the apocalypse because that's certainly what it felt like. But after the first two weeks, everybody kind of got used to it and they're like, okay, we, we can do this. And obviously, the federal stimulus packages have given a lot of hope, whether money's flowing or not. It had, it changed the perception. And if people were able, or businesses were able to make strategic financial decisions early enough to be able to make it through. And I'll use us as an example. We went on furlough as of April 1 for our entire team. We applied for the short, short time compensation through the Department of Economic Opportunity and sharing this, all this, all of these resources with our members as well. And we were able to reduce a lot of our expenses by way of not being in the office. Obviously, our electric bill is not going to be as high, our cleaning services, all of those things. So businesses were able to reduce expenses quickly enough where I'm hoping that they are able to make it an extra three weeks that they were not expecting.
I hear you. But your expenses will go up because you're home.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I got my electric bill yesterday.
Thank you again, Tiffany, for all you do for the community. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Laura, great, great question. District Two, Jesse Purdon.
Tiffany, good to see you.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you for your report and your thoughts. I love the optimism. As PPP dollars, SBA dollars, bridge dollars start rolling in, if, if you all have recommendations, you know, keep this a fluid, fluid conversation. I'll always be glad to take your calls and ways that you think we might be able to help, you know, the people of Benita from the business community get moving again. Look, I know you're on it, but if we can be helpful, you know, let us know. I'm excited to get out to the incubator and give you a good Corona elbow bump when I see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. District One, Amy Caramba.
Hi, Tiffany, thank you. We missed our in-person meeting. It was scheduled right before we went into lockdown. So it's nice to get you on Zoom anyway. And again, I thank you for all that's been done. Again, I'd like to focus on small businesses and those that really cannot work at home. And from the survey that was done by Lee County, we know that a lot of the small businesses do not, their nature of their business does not allow them to work at home. And I think that's where the biggest hardship we're gonna see. And, and I, I've been, I sent, have been sharing with Arlene some thoughts I had about how we as a community, a municipality could help our businesses to be ready to reopen. And whether that happens in a week or three weeks, hopefully it's, it'll be by the end of the month. But I, I envision certain businesses that would lend themselves easily to reopen because they don't have the exposure to clients coming first. But if they're, I think we need to do some outreach to the businesses that we have in, in Benita. And I would ask you if that's a possibility beyond your members and if this, if the city could get involved with that because we must at least have a list of those businesses and just ask them a couple of things. One, have they thought about reopening? And if they did, what do they need to reopen? And do they think they can do it safely? I think that's some questions that we'd like to ask. And if we talk to businesses that are, are operating because they're either essential businesses or they're the kinds of businesses that you described where people can work at home, where, where, when they start to reopen, what are their best practices that they would recommend other businesses from following? So I think some transfer information and a can-do spirit from the entire community is in order. And I think that both, we could do this both through the Lee County entity and through our, definitely locally, I want to really focus on our local business. And when we say we're open, we're, we're gonna really meet it and say that Benita Springs is open for business. And I do think that the, that the demand side has to be addressed. And I think that we can do that more and more through accurate information. And it's wonderful to get all this data from daily and twice daily. But I think we have to focus on the things that are really suggesting that whereas we have an issue with health, it's not as drastic as had, we had expected and we are prepared. That's the message that has to keep coming out and that there are ways for people who are clients, customers to get out to protect themselves. And I'm among that area that even if the business is open, the, the demographic, they're gonna tell me to stay home, you know, in my house because I'm of a certain age, well, well above the age where we're supposed to stay home. So I have to figure out a way to be able to get, feel comfortable going to these places that I have in the past and be that through the masks or washing our hands or, or wearing gloves or whatever it is. We need to get the idea out to our aged population that they can, they don't have to stay in their home and they could still be safe. And, and I think that we have to do that kind of, of, of information distribution. So again, I thank you. I think I don't have any other, I sent you a bunch of questions. You already answered them. I guess my one other area where I think we might, we might be headed for a financial pressure is because people will, who are strapped for funds because they're not working or their businesses aren't operating, that all these shopping centers where we have leases, I think that they might stop paying their rent. And so then we're gonna have shopping centers that are under stress. And that will lead to a, a snowballing of that financial stress. So I think we need to monitor that too because some of these businesses, according to the Lee County survey that went out, especially the small businesses, I think, I can't remember the number, but I think it's like 20 or 30% of these small businesses who are under pressure, who feel pressured, they're not gonna come back. We're gonna lose those businesses. And therefore, there's gonna follow through to the, to the, to the shopping areas or the, the concentrations of our businesses. And we're gonna feel that in the, in the cities and in the counties. So that we need some follow-up there, I think. But thank you for all you do and thank you for all the help they've given us. But I think Benita is moving in a direction where we're gonna try to help our businesses along with our people.
Absolutely. And I certainly echo some of your concerns. I think it's too early to know yet. So we'll know more in the next two to three weeks how people, how some of our businesses are coming out of this. There's been so many wonderful resources that have been helpful from the community foundation supporting our nonprofits to the banks supporting our small businesses with, you know, waiving mortgage payments temporarily and adding them onto the backend of a loan. So there's a lot of things that are happening across the board, across different industries to help to ensure that we don't have a prolonged recession and that we can bounce back out of this.
Great. Thank you, Tiffany. Commissioner Sandelli? Not sure if you had a question or a comment?
No, I, I think the chambers do a great job. And I think as we, on the committee today, it's all, everybody talking to each other, learning through all these conversations, how do we share that information? And I do think it's a matter, once we do, as we phase in, it's a matter of confidence. So be comfortable. If you don't want to go out, don't go out. If you want to go out, you know, we have to make sure we're comfortable in that decision as well. I'm looking forward to it.
From another positive standpoint, all these businesses that didn't have the logistics to embrace kind of this new economy of delivery systems and curbside pickup that has been growing over the last few years, we're forced to implement that. So we, we have a whole new type of economy that we can now participate in, whether you're talking about restaurants or retail. And I mean, Target and Publix are a perfect example of how they have used the curbside delivery. So there's, and those things create more jobs, whether it's through things like Instacart or, or just general employees in these, in these facilities. So there, there are things that certainly will change and it's not necessarily negative. It's certainly a disruption that we'll just have to adjust to.
Right.
Thank you, Tiffany.
We're adjusting. We're adjusting.
We have to be positive, otherwise we'll all just go crazy.
That's right. That's right. That's exactly right. Okay, any, any other members of council for Tiffany? If not, we're gonna let her get a sip of water and go on to the Benita Springs Assistance Office. Tiffany, thank you very much. Are you able to stay with us in case we come back? Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yes.
You do have two representatives from our community, our business community, a representative from McGarvey and also Shaw Development Online. Councilmember Forbes had just asked if we could have current businesses that were in our community, just give a little bit of updates to you all so you know how they're functioning.
Absolutely, absolutely. Just following the agenda, gentlemen. We'd love to hear from McGarvey.
Good afternoon. How is everybody? Well, I think we've really been hit with this shock to the market out of the construction business. We're lucky we're still in business. They let us be open. We changed the protocols. The day that it happened in March 6th, we physically changed the way we do business. To be that and to be clean, we put our employees in. We made sure we did the office, did the proper protocol. And in that proper protocol, we carried it all the way to the field. We go to our construction jobs, there's signage, cleanage. We test the people when they come into the job site, subcontractors, and for temperatures as soon as they walk in the door. If anybody's got a sniffle or a cold, they get sent home and they have to bring a doctor's note to come back. So it's all the way we do the protocol. And that's one of the big things that we've been lucky on construction. So the construction industry, in my vision, has not been really held, hurt too bad. Everybody's been working. Everybody's been safe. We just keep all the distances and we're still performing. The intention of a lot of our customers are moving into places and it's been, been successful. I think the biggest part of our business was we bought into it as a company. It was no longer, it's not gonna happen. Yes, it is. It's here. It's the nature of doing business. And if it needs that to keep your jobs, when I feel want to do that, go home. And it's very clear with us. We do toolbox talks. We do safety checks. We do clean the tool procedures. A lot of that stuff has been happening very well. So I think the construction market has, thanks to the way the government has left us work, we completed, we had a lot of projects that needed to be done for the health department or other people and they're being completed. We're going to oversee those now on other different buildings we have. So that wouldn't have happened if they shut us down. At the same time, we've had good luck on getting materials. Material has not been an issue and workforce people have been. Everybody's glad to have a job. So we sent out to our subcontractors a protocol that we wanted to control in our jobs. If you did not want to do that, we're terminating your contract and somebody else will come in and finish your work. So it was very clear that from the business side of it, we were dictating how that would occur. And I think it's helped us a lot. Inspectors have been coming out to the jobs, they're clean. We know when they're coming, we meet them out front, we keep visiting. Sometimes somebody doesn't want to go inside. We'll take a video camera inside so they could see it, think inspection could be done. Benita Springs done an excellent job of keeping us afloat. We have not backed up. So all that good stuff is happening. I'm more optimistic than pessimist. Last week I was on a conversation with all the big developers and everybody else. And we're looking to be proactive, not reactive. By proactive means, we still got resigned two tents in the last month. That's pretty remarkable these times. We're happy. Don't get me wrong. We sold one residential, build new job, plus we built two more models. We sold a little bit of that timeframe while this is happening. So Naples is, Naples and Benita and Fort Myers is not dead. Because if everybody keeps saying we're dead, we're gonna die. So we gotta make sure we use the upbeat, and there are else we're doing the same way is the way we've come across. We starting new projects right now. We're not thinking the sky is falling. The banks have been good to us. We've got product for our tenants and we're very happy from where we are. I'm thinking as long as we can keep the construction moving, that's our basis. If you look at it, construction is a major part of our economy. If you look at it, construction is a major part of our economy. So we need to keep that thing moving forward. So with that, I'm pretty happy. Any questions from people? Give me a howl and we'll definitely talk about it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. McGarvey and your team over there. You certainly have and always, you know, run a top notch organization. I'll I'll just ask you, you say you are starting new projects and seeing good signs on the ground, maybe for your workers that wouldn't be in the office, Mr. McGarvey, how are things going for them?
Very well. The biggest problem they're seeing is the stress of the family at home, baby at home. When they go home, they leave in the morning and they come back to it, not there full time. And I think that's the only stress that they're really having. They like the paychecks, the paychecks come in every week. We have one of our employees got cancer, we made him stay home and he was paying him to stay home because we don't want him to do that too quickly. Know what I mean? So we're doing that. I don't think there's the main stress to it at all. And I think the new project that we're doing is a new one. We're doing a pharmaceutical manufacturing facility. That's going on in Naples. We're into permitting now. The D O is coming out, we've got to be done that by the end of November. So I think it's positive. It's really positive that people are coming in. The two tenants that we brought into the market in the last month have been very great tenants, just come into Benita. So I think we've got something good that's just not killed.
That's great. District one, Amy, do you have anything for Mr. the McGarvey's?
Unmute, I think.
Yeah, okay, now I'm good. Thank you, John, for that update. I was just, it was hard to follow all the things you said, but I understand that you have you've done a lot of thinking and preparing and making some changes to your methodologies of how you work so that you could keep both your workers safe and to function. And it is, it illustrates the point that those businesses that have been allowed to work seem to be able to function well in this environment. And I'm pleased to hear that you're able to get some new contracts. I just wondered if, you know, you could just share, you know, following the call, if you could just share some of your methodologies that we might be able to extract and use for other people, other businesses that could adapt them to their own circumstances. But again, thank you for being on the forefront of that and providing a safe environment for your workers and for working hard so that that part of the economy is still pretty strong and we don't have to worry about it.
Thank you, Amy.
Well, Amy, answering your question, there's things we had to do. In other words, when subs come on the job, sure, all are good. The temperature gauge is sort of heads, we've got someone on our back order, I think we got three so far in, so three of the jobs had them all the way. So we check the temperature for every person, make sure they're clear. If we see anybody who looked as sickly and coughing or coughing, we then definitely side dress, take a gatorade. I think we had to learn how to work separate when we're working on construction jobs that we're not having protocol of being on top of each other. We make them now eat lunch separately. Instead of bringing the guy called the gang of puke trucks in, we bring bring food sandwiches from home. That way they're not getting protocol of something bad food. So we've been doing pretty much that. And that's really worked the right way. So as soon as they knew management was in front of us, rushed to buy, it was serious and it wasn't serious, I'm not going to tell somebody, I'm sorry. You know, I want to make sure we try to do everything we can to function this world.
Thank you. Those are very good ideas to hopefully hopefully we could incorporate it in with other businesses.
Great. Thank you, Amy. District two, Jesse Purdon.
I don't have anything worse than, thanks.
Great, thank you. District three, Laura Carr.
No, great. I'm happy to see everybody's doing well and healthy. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Laura. District four, Chris Corey.
Have anything, but congratulations on on addressing the problems and staying in business and making progress.
Thank you, Chris. Fred, Forbes in district six.
Yeah, two things, John. Ed Whacker was supposed to talk to several of the other big businesses in your park and find out how they were doing and if they had a trouble getting their workers to come in and all that. Can you report on that or can he do it?
I can do it. Ed did all the checking. Our park is probably 75% occupied right now, everybody's working. The only one that's in my park that's not working is my mom right now. And he's trying to do something a little bit different with his giving out lunch and food stuff and night 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 stuff from the food trucks that he brings in here. They've been successful. On the whole, we've been very lucky. Client based that we picked in the native at the crash of 2006, we were very selective who we picked. So we diversified our portfolio to be everything down from private service to people who are not tied to all construction all the way. So the only one that's really hurting right now is the swimming pool people that just opened their business a week before and they were shut down, but they were just cranking up. So they'll they'll go back into operation as soon as the time happens. Some are just training kids to swim. And we brought into that pool inside of an industrial building, put us so many kids around here. When you look at it, how many residents, why did you let these people come into your building? The answer was very clear. I can make the buildings, protect the cool walls in the interior, very simple. All I was concerned about was the kids. Kids today don't get the swimming lessons and now that's why we've got Goldfish Swim Club here, a very successful company across the country. They set a franchise up and they're just starting up. So they got they got waxed into these three there. We extend them timeframe before they start paying rent, so they get up and running. That's what we try.
Great. Thank you very much.
No, just congratulations to John and his team. It's good to hear that they're moving forward and wish them continued success.
Great.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. McGarvey or Ed, any any final closing thoughts? For the moment?
We're good. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being with us. Keep up the great work. Thanks for everything you do for our community. We're now going to move on.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you have Shaw Development on as well.
Okay, we'll just keep going to the revised agenda. Hello, Shaw Development, how are you? Welcome. Shaw Development? Is that Tom Gettle? Is Tom with us or?
Might be, it's Dyer.
We have Dave Dyer, VP of Operations.
Okay, great. Welcome, Dave.
It looks like they may be having trouble with their sound.
Okay.
It looks like they got off. Maybe they're getting back on.
Yeah, just maybe maybe get it to someone else and we can jump them back on when they come back on.
Okay. Arlene?
It looks like they're back.
It appears they're back on.
Oh, great.
Dave, can you hear us? Dave? And I just don't think they can they can, we can't hear them.
Mayor, if you'd like to move on, we'll let Laura and her team handle that. We are on to our social services response to COVID-19 now.
Okay, very good. And we have Terry Lemain with us from the Benita Springs Assistance Office. Good afternoon, Terry.
Good afternoon and good evening, invited guests, city council members. Thank you for the invitation. I'm pleased to give an update. Benita Springs Assistance Office continues to remain open and we're very proactive in supporting our community through our mission, while ensuring the proper safety with the CDC protocols with our staff, our volunteers and the residents that we are serving. For the last five weeks, our lobby has been closed to the public, but we continue to supply food and hygiene items through our back door in our parking lot to residents in need Monday through Friday from noon to 4:00 PM are our current hours. After hours, we have a voicemail system that we encourage all residents to leave a detailed message and somebody will get back with them within 24 hours. That even includes Saturday and Sunday. We are monitoring our voicemail system as well as our email. If anybody has a detailed question, we're asking them to please kindly take the time to write out their question and email us at info@benitasistance.org. Once again, that's info@benitasistance.org. And we thank everybody for sending in emails and their patience, but we are getting back to the those folks that have unique questions. Speaking of unique questions, I appreciated the question I received today from, I believe, a city council member asking what the most critical need that I see at this time. The most critical need that I see at this time is the D E O unemployment claims process. Other than that, we've had no real request for any COVID testing in our community that we serve. We have had the opportunity to financially assist residents though with some financial need in the medical field. And that is only for items such as colostomy products, diabetes medications. And that's only because the folks cannot afford it because they have not received their unemployment checks yet. We have no no reporting of any intergenerational exposure. We do provide each client that does come to our agency with antibacterial soap and we have been doing that since March 13th. So we are not providing any gloves, surgical masks or any other sanitation or products. And we really haven't had the request for it. We've had meetings with Florida Power and Light and Benita Springs Utilities and with my board of directors. So we are financially prepared to begin our financial assistance programs for rent, utilities and other items such of that nature within our mission through our emergency disaster fund. We're extremely grateful, I have to say, of our partnership with the United Way. United Way is a great partner. We appreciate our donors, our volunteers and the collaboration of the community as a whole. So I'm open to any questions that any of you may have. And I thank you all for your great service and I hope that your families are well and safe.
Thank you very much, Terry. Fred in district six, Fred Forbes?
No, I'm I'm very happy with what I hear from from her on what they're doing and I hope hope things continue that well.
Great, thank you. Chris Corey in district four.
City to assist you in in getting the materials out, products out to people, anything at all that you need from the city.
Thank you, Mr. District four, Councilman Chris Corey for the question. At this current time, we really have no needs from city staff or council members. There's been a lot of collaboration. A lot of you have independently called our agency and I thank you for that and I thank you for your support and communication. But I do know that in my heart and soul, if there's anything that our agency needs that the city will be behind us, that we will not feel bad to reach out and ask for help.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Terry. Laura Carr, district three.
Hi, Terry. Great job. Thank you very much for the update and keep strong, fabulous and health and happiness with your family, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Terry. District two, Jesse Purdon.
Hey, Terry, good to see you again. I just saw you the other night getting dinner and I I just want to say what I said to you the other night. You do such an essential part of of really what is the heart of the Benita stuff in the sense that, you know, the people that you're dealing with are the weakest among us and they have the least resources and you guys are in there every day doing the hardest type of work for the people who need it the most. So during this crisis, hats off to you. And as I said the other day, call me, let me know what you need. And if there's anything we can do, we'll be there.
Councilman, thank you very much for those great words of gratitude and and we are pleased and honored to do the good work that we do. It is our mission and like I said, it's all collaboration, it's all teamwork. And this is a community together coming to the top of the print to the top, or I'm trying to say, we're all rising to the top together. And thank you for your kind words and we deeply appreciate what we're doing and we're make, I have to say, since I've had the position here, I want the council and the mayor to know and the invited guests, it has been very difficult for some of these people to come forward and ask for help. These are people that I've worked with together in the hospitality industry for 25, 30 years here in Southwest Florida. And we're seeing a lot of new faces that Tiffany Esposito mentioned. These are people that have, you know, from no fault of their own, did they fall on bad economic times. So we're very diversified in the residents that we are serving. We also have gotten word from the United Way that some of our sister agencies in San Carlos and Astero have unfortunately had to shut down due to not being able to obtain volunteers. So our partner, United Way, knows that we are also opening our arms to the residents of San Carlos and Astero at this unprecedented time.
Great. Thank you very much. District one, Amy Caramba.
Well, first of all, I want to add my thank you and appreciation for everything you've done. And it's just amazing how you continue to stand up and do what whatever is asked of you. So it's greatly appreciated by me personally and by the city and particularly by the council. I was going to ask the question and I think you already answered it because I wondered if you were seeing an increase in the in the numbers of of clients that are asking for help as a result of the of the of the virus problem. And I think your answer is yes. Do you have any, do you have any numbers or anything about what what, how many people, clients you have to address?
For our first quarter numbers of the people that we serve with food and hygiene, we're about up 60% since the outbreak on Friday, the 13th of March. We're about up 60%. And we're also trying to help those residents that are having a hard time getting their D E O unemployment benefits by providing them a printout hard copy with the self-addressed envelope because they can't get to the library. And some of our residents don't have access to the internet or computers that don't have, you know, children in the household or simply just don't have any other access to the internet to apply for unemployment.
Well, again, I appreciate that effort and you're probably preventing a lot of despair within our community. And it's it's just so important and it's so appreciative. And again, and if the council can do anything more that to support you than than to give our good wishes, I know we've support you personally, but thank you again for all that effort.
Thank you for the kind words. And again, it is a team effort. We're very grateful for what we continue to do. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Great. Thank you, Amy. County Commissioner Ray Sandelli.
I just wanted to say it was nice to talk early this morning, Terry, and probably see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Looking forward to it and thank you for all you do as well.
My pleasure. Part of the team.
Great. Anybody, anything else for Terry at this time? Terry, thank you very, very much. I know we worked through Hurricane Irma together and we're different in a different way working through this together. So thank you for to you and your team for all of your great work.
Thank you very much. I'll pay it forward to my team and thank you all for all of your hard work. And again, stay well, be safe and God bless America.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Love Inc. now.
Thank you, everybody. And we appreciate the heart of our leaders to to work together to meet the needs of our community. So as an update, Love in the Name of Christ began working remotely on on April 1st. Similar to what we did after Irma, our intake process has been modified to cover the current issues caused by the COVID-19 matters. Police management continues as we work from our homes in order to protect the safety of our staff and volunteers. Number of clients has quadrupled with nearly all the need centered around housing. About half of the neighbors in need say that they will be receiving stimulus payments or an or unemployment. However, there are challenges with people who do not qualify for stimulus check or unemployment. A couple of the questions that came was that what do we feel are the critical needs that we're seeing in our community? Obviously, the first thing is housing. We had that problem before COVID-19 hit us to have reasonable, affordable housing. So the hold on evictions has been a huge help, but of course, that's going to come to an end. Landlords, for the main part, have been understanding, however, a tenant's track record is extremely important. Stimulus money will help with one month's expenses, particularly rent, but we're concerned about what will happen in the in the ensuing months, particularly as people try to play catch up, assuming that they do find employment in a timely manner. Second thing is jobs. A particular need is communicating available jobs or, as Terry mentioned, having computer access to fill out applications since the library is closed for people who do not have computers. Many people use their phone, but it's really hard to fill out an employment application on a phone. The third is families balancing homeschooling with working at home or looking for a job. The third is families balancing homeschooling with working at home or looking for a job. Once school is out, many families will be challenged about daycare and summer care because some parents may not be working yet, and frankly, everybody's probably going to be tired of being cooped up together. Fourth, mental health. We're extremely concerned about this and feel that there may be a tidal wave of serious mental health issues heading our way. We've already started to see signs of great emotional stress. Besides being isolated for so long, uncertainty about a job, and then the additional stress of, oh my gosh, am I going to get this virus? Self-esteem is such an important part of good mental health, and God wired us to be productive, so not working or knowing if you even have a job could easily wreak havoc on people's mental stability. In addition, those who have been working are on overload, and that creates mental health challenges for them and their families. Isolation is particularly affecting our seniors, who are dealing with fear about the virus, and some won't even go out to get their necessities. We feel that there are many who are in need, but we're not sure who they are or where they are. Five, effective timely communication. People need to know where are the resources, where are the jobs, where to get the food, and how do I apply for them? Our churches have, want you to know, our 20-plus partner churches, that we are poised and ready to help in any way that we can. Similar to what we did after Hurricane Irma, we're putting together a COVID-19 rent, rent fund, but we want, we realize that we're not looking at probably just one month's rent for most of our clients, as I'm sure Terry can attest to. Our church families have made and distributed hundreds and hundreds of masks. We provide a limited grocery delivery and prescription pickup for vulnerable population. We've assimilated mental health resources, and when things open up, can provide access to a computer for a job or to help people update their resume. We do have some resources. We have a few landlords that have contacted us that are willing to lease their home on a short-term basis, but there has been a, Scott, the, the state has said that we, they cannot rent on a short-term basis, and that's, I think, enforced until the end of April. One of the questions that came forward is have we been asked for assistance to get tests or medical care? We have not had any requests for that, and we've not had, had any requests for sanitation supplies, firsthand sanitizer or mask. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And in terms of, I guess, the short-term rental, um, boy, I, I, you know, and I, certainly we, with vacation rentals and the Florida League of Cities and the Florida League of Mayors, I know that issue, I know Fred and some others do, we would probably all do. Are there any thoughts amongst the group about those, or how many do we know at this point in Benita are really in need of short-term housing? Do we have a sense, Ann or Terry or anybody? Okay.
No, I think that once the, once the landlords can pursue eviction, that, those numbers, I'm assuming, will definitely increase.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Why don't we start in District Six? Fred?
I just think that Love Inc. is doing a great job, just like Benita Assistance, they both have their place in the community, and I know Ann very well, and I, I can only say that she does a great job.
We have a great team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Four, Chris Corey?
It's a wonderful organization. It serves a lot of people in Benita Springs. You know, this whole thing about evictions is, that's very troubling. I hope we find a solution to it, so we don't have a bunch, increase the amount of people who are homeless, or, it's tough enough to deal with this virus, much less worry about if you're going to have a roof over your head, so I hope we figure it out. Thanks very much for all you do.
Thank you, Chris. District Three, Laura Carr?
Oh, great job. Glad you're around, as you, uh, mental health issues are definitely going to be emerging in our society, sadly. And you got to remember, the landlords, they got to pay their bills, too. You know, I mean, some of them, you know, because otherwise, you know, right, you see for me, you see Benita, you know, a lot of us don't see Benita because we live in gated communities, and, but you feel, you see and feel the heart of Benita every day, so I'm so grateful that you're around, and Terry, and, and Tiffany, you know, it's just wonderful the services you provide, and, and I guess that people are probably finding out how important you are, too. So thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
District Two, Jesse Purdon?
I'd just like to echo what Laura said. You guys rock, you're doing God's work, we appreciate you, and let us know how we can be of assistance.
Thank you.
District One, Amy Caramba?
I just want, want to thank you for all the effort you did, and most of those questions were mine, so all my questions have been answered, pretty much, you did a thorough job, but it's just remarkable the work that you and Benita Assistance and Cafe of Life and our other care agencies do every single day, and to come forward at this time when we are, you are under as much stress as we are, and you continue that work, I'm so appreciative, and stay strong, stay healthy, because we need you. You're our support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Sandelli?
Just adding my thanks, and I think faith will be a big part of our recovery, so thank you for that.
Amen, brother.
No, they, thank you very much, Riley and Ann, you, you guys have been an integral part of this community for years and years, day after day, year after year, so thank you, and God bless each of you, and I certainly know that we'll be, we'll be in contact soon.
Well, appreciate that. Actually, I can bring you up to date on Cafe Life, too, while I'm at.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And it's kind of nice to be able to work hand-in-hand with, with Love Inc. and everything, too. And so the church, of course, works with Love Inc., but as a, as a board member for Cafe, it's been incredible to watch the change and, and the involvement that Cafe has had from changing from just serving a hot meal, you know, under the tree there, in the banyan tree, to doing all the services that they do. One of the things we, in fact, I have a, a report that we just put out to the board talking about what's going on right now and how that's impacted us, and of course, at the park, you know, that we have there in Rosemary Park, with the pavilion, that we're normally serving a hot meal every day to 100 and over, you know, and it's down right now to where we're only seeing about 30 that are coming for the hot meals because our transportation, we've limited the transportation of taking people and picking people up to different places with the bus and so forth, because of the fear that they have and the different things that are going on. So they're limited as far as the ones that are coming to the park, and so therefore, our, our food pantry as well has changed from having it to where they can select different goods, and the pantry items that come, a lot of the fresh items that come from Publix and Fresh Market, which, by the way, are such wonderful partners within the community and how they bless the community. But, so now when they come for the meal, they also receive a bag of pantry items, and, and then we're also taking those, those same pantry items out to the public, and so those, those items are going, being delivered to a couple of the different locales that we'd normally do pickup with. But one of the big things that, that has changed, too, is taking care of the seniors, and this has been, this has affected them greatly because of the fear aspect of, of the virus and having to limit their ability to go anywhere, to go out, and so the staff at Cafe has been wonderful, and the volunteers, we've really not lost very many volunteers that, they continue to come in, but I mean, it still is a stretch for everybody to do what they do. So the hot meals now are, instead of staying there and eating, they are given to them as a grab-and-go type thing, just like what we have to do with ordering the curbside. But overall, the, the amazing thing about it is that the, the public has continued to come forward with donations and with their volunteer time. The, the suppliers, like, like Farmer Mike's and, and Fresh Market and so forth, have continued to, to supply things for everything. But one of the biggest parts is that we are seeing an influx for financial aid, and, and so that's going to be what we see as a, as a real impact coming forward, is going to be that, is going to be the request for the aid, and particularly with, because the clientele of Cafe of Life, as you know, a lot of them are not in a position to receive a stimulus check, because they are part of the unknowns, if you will. Not that they don't work, and not that they don't add to the community, and not that they're not needed to be taken care of, but because of that, they won't be receiving that, and of course, their employment is down. And so we're doing the best that we can to try and coordinate all that we can with the other agencies and, and take care of their needs. But again, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tough for a while.
Right. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Jesse?
I just wanted to say to you, Riley and Ann, I, I don't think I've met you in person, but Michael Robinson, who's down there in Rosemary at Cafe Life, I mean, that's, that's the middle of my district, and I lived off of Rosemary for three years. He runs a great ship down there, those kids love him, he does a great job, and I don't know if you know or not, he's actually on the outreach committee for the city, but, you know, you don't get to plug people to their boss too often, so I figured I'd take this opportunity. He serves you all very well down there.
I get to see him, I get to see him on a regular basis, and I agree with you, he, he does an incredible job, and in fact, one of the things he said just kind of breaks his heart, is the fact of having to shut down the fact of, of not being able to have the parties there and, and help, you know, have the time for the community to come and do the things that they do there at the pavilion. And so, yeah, he does an incredible job. Appreciate, I appreciate that.
And I would just mirror that, because I wo, wo, work with the advisory committee, the outreach committee on the city of Benita Springs, and he is, he's, he's, I, I call him Robinson, so you know, we, but he, he's very passionate about what he does, he's very good about what he does, he's very patient, he, he just really does an incredible job, not only for you, but for our outreach committee, and yeah, Michael Robinson, so next time anybody sees him that, that's within earshot, please give him a, give him a fist bump, I guess, or a, or an elbow, an elbow flex, whatever, whatever we do now, but, but he really, really, heart, mind, and soul does a great job for you guys.
He has a heart for the community, there's no question about it, and, and I will definitely pass that on. I, I, I feel the same way.
Thank you very, very much. Other members of council or Commissioner Sandelli, anybody have anything else for anybody? Love Inc., Benita Springs Assistance, a, a, any of the various groups?
Mayor, I'm good. Thank you very much for the opportunity to participate, and I've got eight minutes to get to another meeting.
Well, that's great. Well then, thank you very, very much.
But I, we're not going to have a chance to talk to.
No, no, absolutely, we are. Trying to go, do a round robin at the end, Laura, would that be okay?
I thought Mayor Sandelli was leaving, sorry.
No, I was just, but I was going to give Commissioner Sandelli first crack at last call for any comments or questions or opinions or whatever, miscellaneous, your call.
No, I, I, I think that I feel good about the direction that we're moving in. I've always liked alignment, whether it was on the water issue, I think we have great alignment now between what's coming down the pike from the governor, allowing us some flexibility, you know, within our own communities, and I think we're all pulling in the same direction, and when that happens, I think we can get things done, so I'm encouraged.
Commissioner Sandelli, thank you for everything you're doing. I know that my phone rang at 7:30 this morning, and it was you on the other end. I helped, you know, but, but, you know, for the good of the community, and Terry Lemain and some other folks, so absolutely, so the days start early, and thank you, Commissioner, very much. We take great pride in you as a county commissioner, and certainly, everybody knows me, I'm pretty proud that you're from Benita Springs. I'll.
I'm proud as well to be from Benita Springs, so thank you, everybody.
God bless you for the work that you do, Commissioner, and we'll talk real soon. Thank you very much. Amy, I'll start in District One with you for any final thoughts or anything at all?
I just appreciate the focus on both the business end and the care end of this, of our, our, our community, and I do, would like, I would like to follow up with the council, and I might just put it in as a green sheet if there's an interest, because I've been, I want to get together with Arlene and follow up on some suggestions where we could have our own plan of what we, what efforts we could make to help both the care community and the businesses to reopen. And I have some ideas, and there's no, you know, we don't, we don't want to do it at this meeting, but I just might put it in on a green sheet and share some of the things that I've already been kicking around with Arlene, if that's okay with the rest of the council, but I appreciate the work of every person here and the contribution they make to our, our city, and we're going to be fine, but we're going to be tired. Stay well, stay healthy, and you don't have to stay home, but wear a mask and wash your hands.
Thank you, thank you, Amy, very much. District Two, Jesse Purdon?
No, keep up the good work. Staff's killing it. You know, a lot of people don't realize who, you know, aren't part of the process, you know, we're on the calls, but they're the ones getting the minutia of things actually done, and it happens all day. I know I bug them, and I'm sure the, the six of the rest of you do, too, so you guys have been working really hard, and I appreciate it, just keep, keep moving the ball forward, and thanks for keeping me updated with the regularity that you are.
Thank you, Jesse. District Three, Laura Carr? Hello, Laura.
Hi. Um, just again, thank you so much, everybody, you know, stay healthy and keep doing good. I was hoping to talk to Commissioner Sandelli, but I guess we'll have to save that for another time.
I, I can get you guys linked up, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. I know we had to get to another meeting, so sorry about that, but I will get you guys connected, so thank you, Laura. Okay. District Four, Chris Corey?
Information that was put out, and especially with the organizations in our city that are outreaching to others, the comments about Cafe of Life reminded me that at one time I was involved in the audit of the Federal Reserve System, and I just looked up the stats, and they haven't changed much, but where he talks about people unable to get stimulus payments, 25% of U.S. households have no banking account, so that, you know, it's a real problem when the government is trying to get out stimulus payments to families and to kids. So I think it just gives us a perspective on sometimes how deep these problems run in our community, and, and the fact we ought to be looking for ways to help these people and to support the organizations that are really doing a great job in trying to meet their needs.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much. District Six, Fred Forbes?
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to tell everybody that Shaw, that runs three shifts a day, seven days a week, 150 employees, I asked them if they had any problem with people not being able to come to work because of illness, and they said no. Secondly, our HOA, we have a big landscape crew, and we have another crew that maintains the golf course. None of those have gotten ill in this. They do take their temperature every morning. So the thing is, I wish Ray was still here. I think we can be a little more aggressive on getting open than we are. The other thing I hope we can do, and this is a request of Derek and Arlene, get together and figure out what can we do, maybe under the emergency ordinance that the mayor renews once a week, we can give some kind of latitude to businesses that don't have outside seating for dining to temporarily set up in the parking lot or whatever, because that is going to be the place that most people will feel the most comfortable with initially coming back to the restaurant, not all of them, but, but a big percentage of them, that's it.
No, thank you very much, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, and, and for those of you that don't know, obviously Governor DeSantis has put together a task force to basically reopen Florida, and it's called Reopen Florida. If, if it's the Florida Channel that's broadcast locally through WFGCU, you can watch it every day moving forward, and it started yesterday, I believe, perhaps Monday, I apologize. I'm guilty like anybody, the days tend to run into each other for whatever reason, but within the past two days, this task force has started, and every day at 10 o'clock on the Florida Channel, and maybe Laura Taylor can chime in if I'm, I'm giving the wrong network, but it's the, when you watch the state reps and the state senators up in Tallahassee, it's the Florida Government Channel through FGCU. it's the Florida Government Channel through FGCU. Locally for me, it's Channel 16. But every day at 10 o'clock, Governor DeSantis, and every day at 2 o'clock, Governor DeSantis is on there with his reopen. I mean, they're talking about restaurants, they're talking about businesses, they're talking about beaches, they're talking about everything under the sun. And that task force includes obviously Governor Ron DeSantis and the members of the task force, Lieutenant Governor Jeanette Nunez, Florida Chief Financial Officer Jimmy Patronas, Florida Attorney General Ashley Moody, Florida Senate President Bill Galvano, Florida House of Representatives Speaker Jose Aliva, State Senator Wilton Simpson, who is the president designate, State Senator, excuse me, State Representative Chris Sprouls, Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran, Enterprise Florida President and CEO Jamal Saul, Miami Dade County Mayor Carlos Jimenez, Broward County Mayor Dale Holness, Palm Beach County Mayor David Kerner, President and CEO of Tampa General Hospital, John Chorus, President of Walt Disney World, John DiMauro, CEO of Public Supermarkets, Todd Jones, Sid Kitson, Chairman, Board of Governors for the State University System, Paul Riley, Chairman and CEO of Raymond James, Alex Sanchez, President and CEO of the Florida Bankers Association, President and CEO of Florida Power and Light, Eric Sylligy, CEO of Universal Orlando, Executive Vice President John Sprouls, Vice President Global Supply Chain Lockheed Martin, Patrick Sunderland, and finally President of AT&amp;T Florida and the Caribbean, Joe York. So there certainly is a very robust and very talented group of people. I've been watching this channel as I work and in and out of conference calls every day. Between, like I said, it's on all day with different discussions and different amounts or different information. But every day at 10 and every day at 2, you will certainly see that. And I'm going to let Laura Taylor fine tune that a little bit for the channels, if she would please, of how you can get this information.
Sure, that is WGCU and then also CenturyLink Fort Myers, CenturyLink Channel 13, as well as Comcast 97.
Okay, thank you. And I know for Hotwire, anybody that might have Hotwire, it's Channel 16. But it's, it's, you're really seeing it step by step by step by question of how to reopen Florida. Where we're literally all in this together. They're doing a Zoom meeting like we're doing here and talking through everything. So I would encourage you to, to get on that line. And I would, at this point, ask if staff has anything they'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of quick things. One is also you can view that live stream on the website for the Florida Channel. You can, and there are links on our local media to get to that website. So you can watch it live stream as well through your computer. We did want to give you just a brief update on the numbers. As of 10 AM this morning, Florida had 28,309 cases and 893 deaths. Benita Springs has reported at 72 cases, but I want to break down the zip codes. 34134 is at 14 cases and 34135 is at 61 cases. And as we know, some of those may be our neighboring jurisdictions in between because there's a little bit of a difference in numbers there. Lee County is at 794 cases and Lee County's reported deaths is 29. As of 7:30 this morning, we have opened the city's passive recreational facilities as well. We have opened the Cullums Trail for walking and exercising, all in compliance with the governor's order. We've also opened the Benita, the Benita Nature Place Grounds and Trails. And we have also opened River Park Boardwalks and grounds. And all this is in compliance with the social distancing guidelines. We also have signage in English and Spanish reminding folks of those guidelines as well. We're continuing to monitoring everything here is every day and participating in our joint conference calls with the other neighboring jurisdictions as well as our county management system as well.
Thank you very much. And Arlene, I know we're monitoring so many things day by day, but, and that really, in a sense, is the answer. But people are obviously asking about beaches and the town library and the like. I know you and I have exchanged some informations on what we're receiving on our daily calls. Do you have anything you'd want to share along those lines?
Well, correct, as we hearing from Lee County that we should be receiving some guidelines from the governor's task force by this Friday. That's what our hopes are. And once we have those, we'll be able to react to those guidelines as swiftly as possible. We know that Lee County is anticipating, you know, having meetings as swiftly as possible. We will also coordinate with them and understand when that happens. And we'll work with, we'll, we'll work with the council should we have a need for an emergency meeting for further openings as well. But as soon as those recommendations come, which we're hopeful will be by the end of the week, we'll be able to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Derek, anything to add? Or Arlene, did you have something else?
Just one is just a happy reminder. And I want, unfortunately with social distancing and our workforce telecommuting, I did want to say a special thank you. We have, usually we get the opportunity to thank our administrative professionals. Today is Administrative Professionals Day and they have really been bringing us and hitting it home. We're not able to do what we can do every day without them. And if you would, give me just one quick, I just want to do, and as my 15 year old says, a shout out to, who I know that these folks are watching because that helps us move quicker through these processes as they watch and then they start scribbling and then they have the notes for us to keep going. So Ms. Connie DeBruno, our Senior Administrative Assistant in Public Works, Linda Lowell, our Assistant Administrative in Public Works, Debbie Valente is a Senior Administrative in Communications, Lori Hamm is a City Hall Executive Assistant, Nadine is our City Front Hall Desk, as well as Leanne at City Hall Front Desk, Alana in Neighborhood Services, Jill Davis is an Assistant to our Clerk, and of course, the one who hits it home for me every day, Jane Swanson, and your Administrative Assistant in essence, Debbie Philipek. So thank you all. We greatly appreciate you. And because we can't do it in person, we want to send our love.
Oh, absolutely, Arlene, and thank you so much for that. Derek, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Laura, any public service notices or any information? I know you're on daily calls with the press people and communications. Anything you might want to add?
Just that we did send out the release about the opening of the parks. And I know the Benita banner was getting information to publish as well as NBC2.
Okay, thank you very much. And this is just one thing I'll add. There's going to be a pop-up grocery store coming to Benita Springs. And that's going to be at the, the Benita Springs at the corner of Benita Beach Road and Livingston Road, the Benita Art Center. And I don't have much more information than that, other than they're doing a pop-up. And I believe that is at 7 PM tonight, Arlene, is that correct?
I believe so. They sent us some information and that would be some grocery store items, toiletry items. And I believe it's sort of a drive-through type ordering.
Correct. That, that, that's, okay, great. Anybody else? Last call. Otherwise, thank you, everybody.
Well, I do have something. I guess it's for Derek. Hi, Derek. Is he there?
Yes.
I am.
Okay, hiya. A couple of people are asking boat launches. Are they open or are we allowed to get our boats or not?
I believe that, are you speaking about marinas? Are you speaking about just regular park launches?
I guess both. I don't know. I mean, that was just it. When are we going to have our boat launches opened is what the person asked? And then others asked about marina. So I guess when?
There are marina restrictions in place based on the Miami Dade order that was incorporated by the governor, which provides that the marinas can only operate for commercial users. I do not recall if there was any restrictions in the, in the order on boat ramps and facilities. Those are controlled locally.
And that still stands though, even though the governor said no more distinction between, you know, what's key, what's essential and what's not essential?
Until he, until he recalls the order, then no, it's still in place.
And how are we, this is such a fluid situation and we want to pivot quickly. What do we do? I've been informed that Sarasota, for example, is going to open beaches this weekend or by Monday. I mean, what happens if tomorrow the governor says okay to something? How do we then act as a council to get, to get it okay for our people?
Okay, one of, one of the things that has to be clarified is that the governor did not shut down beaches.
No, no, okay.
So Sarasota County, I know Charlotte County is opening on Friday. Marco had at one point then closed Jackson. That's all at the local discretion level. The state parks and state beaches are still closed.
Okay, so when you say local level though, that's county, correct? Because people are asking me
If it is, if it is a city-owned park, a city-owned, then the city would control.
Okay, so what about like down at docks? Is that beach city-owned or is that county or?
County-owned.
County?
Yep.
But so then the city could decide on dog walk, dog parks and all of those things? We could be looser about?
We can decide on anything that, that is ours.
Okay, well, can we talk about that or can we do that? And if people agree to the social distancing, can we start opening up what is our parks?
Well, I believe that was what Arlene just went over. We did, we have opened up some of our parks.
Some of them, right. Can we just open up all of them?
You can open up all of them. I would, I would assume that some of those parks are going to be difficult to maintain social distancing, such as the pools and recreations.
Uh huh, well.
I think we should start with the ones that we have and see how it goes. And then we can take a look at them and we can get some feedback from Arlene and the staff to see which ones they think they could open. Excuse me, let me finish. That they can, that they think we could open and still maintain the distancing. Because what a problem would be is if the distancing is not followed, then we're going to have to close them. And we, I don't want to open them and then close them. I want to open them and keep them open. So I like the ones that they chose to start. And, you know, we could get some feedback. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how, how well behaved the community is. And we, you know, we've done a great job, so it might be great, you know, but it may not be. So one step at a time.
If we can get away from the fear factor and focus on the science, we don't have anything to fear about people talking in public. If they're, if you're healthy, stay, you go out. If you're sick, you stay home. It's that simple. But why can't we give our people a chance to adhere to social distancing? It's almost like we're being parents that don't trust our kids to be home alone and they're going off to college next weekend. So why not trust them? Sweden, you know, didn't shut down anything. It's the only economy that didn't do any shelter, didn't do any shutdowns and they had no issues with death and runs on their hospital. So there is evidence that shows we don't need to do what we're doing, but
Sweden had a higher
distant people and people do keep their distance. I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear what you said with the delay.
I just said Sweden has the highest death rate of any country in Europe.
Not if you control for population. But anyway, we're here in America in Benita Springs. And why can't we give our citizens the chance to have a dog park and stay six feet away? The dogs don't have to, but the people do, correct? Hey, Mike.
Hi, Mike, welcome.
How's it going?
Great, Mike. We're actually getting close to wrapping up. We're having a discussion about reopening. Certainly, we know you were working. It was a valuable conversation. Do you have some thoughts, Mike, or questions at this time?
No, mainly, you know, just from what I'm catching up on, there's a lot of things reopening. But we did, you know, give Arlene the authority to reopen things as things came up. So I think that'll get us on a good path to get things open faster without having to have the extra meetings. I know, I think it was Sarasota, the, I think they were open in dog parks and a lot of other parks. So I think we just need to, you know, get on a footing where we can get more things open.
Well, you came in late. That's what we're trying to decide. I didn't realize that we're just going to let Arlene, you know, call and deal, you know, communicate, but that we can pivot quickly and we don't have to have a meeting per se.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jesse.
Just point of order, are we in a position where even if we were to make a decision right now, where we could do that, being as it's a workshop? Or is this a discussion for after Friday when DeSantis' folks talk?
The council is not allowed to take any action at the workshop. You have already delegated authority to Arlene to make these decisions. So with respect to the parks that have been closed, you didn't take action to make those closures. Those were all done under that delegated authority. So as positions change, Arlene will be able to respond to them.
Perfect, thank you. That was the clarification I needed, Derek. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Mike or anybody else have any questions or anything to add at this point?
No, just, you know, sorry I couldn't get on earlier. Just, you know, another crazy day at work. There's definitely more and more people getting out now and doing things. Noticed a huge difference on, on the roads. There's a lot more traffic out there. So people are definitely antsy. They're ready to get out, ready to do things. And numbers wise, you know, I think everything's looking good to get things open as soon as possible. I don't see any reason, I mean, I know whatever the governor shut down, we don't have the authority to, you know, go looser than what the state is. But anything that he hasn't, you know, said has to be shut down, I think we should be opening ASAP.
Right, and Mike, I just wanted, if you probably heard, but in case you haven't, obviously Governor DeSantis formed a statewide task force, reopen Florida. And daily at 10 AM and 2 PM, Governor DeSantis is on the Florida Channel, WFGCU, and certainly other links and ways to watch that statewide. But a long, illustrious list. And by Friday, we're going to have some recommendations. And you can bet Benita Springs will be ready to implement the recommendations.
Yeah, sounds good.
Mayor, just to add, I know one of the things that you're hearing regularly on your conference calls with the, the other cities and commissioners, we're all working to do this united because when one opens and another's does not, we just want to make sure we're completely united and informing each other. So I will definitely, you know, continue this discussion, as I know you will, with our joint conference call meetings so that we're working consistently. As soon as we knew that Lee County was moving forward with their passive parks, you know, we tried to work through that and keep you all informed on the process and work through that as well.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Last call. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Stay safe, stay strong. Bye-bye. Good night.